By the public, please find your seats. It is now two o'clock, so I'll reconvene the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County for matters by the public here on June 8th, 2021, the first Tuesday where the Board has meeting as a public body. If you'd like to make comments to the Board as a whole on matters by the public, please submit a comment card to a member of the county staff. And I'll ask the clerk to just take a roll call briefly so we can record. The Commissioner is present.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner, Mayor Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
I am here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Very good. We do have a quorum with seven county commissioners present. I'd like to just make the following reminder. Addressing the Commission, when your name is called, please step up to either podium and state for the record your name. The quorum, any person making impertinent or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the Commission shall be barred from further audience before the Commission by the presiding officer unless permission to continue or again addressed. The Commission is granted by majority vote of the Commission members present. We appreciate your participation in addressing the elected body here today. And I'll turn it over now to Commissioner Bernard to call members by the public.
The first person will be Fane Loesman, followed by Nikki Brown.
Good afternoon.
Oh, hold on one second. I apologize.
Good afternoon, Fane Loesman. I'm coming here today to give a heads up to people who use the intercoastal waterway, people on the north part of the county. I want to explain what's going on. There was a recent accident up by Donald Ross where a boat crashed into a concrete piling and a number of people were hurt. And it was reported on the news that they crashed into a concrete block. And they assumed it was one of my floats that I have my floating home on. That's not the case, but the next time it probably will be. What's happening is I own 2.1 million square feet of property in Singer Island, mainly submerged land, but with about 1,500 feet of private beach. And I have a homestead on one of my parcels, an eight-acre parcel, and I have a floating container home there. I previously had a more conventional floating home. Now this is on a concrete raft. What's happened is the people in Singer Island who are led by Botel, she has encouraged them to vandalize my property. How'd they do that? I had electrical service for two years. Botel reached out to see that my electricity was turned off. We had a fence on one property. Botel encouraged the neighbors to tear the fence down. And I discussed previously where she fired the black chief building official because she refused to revoke the permit. And by the way, the reason we put the fence up to begin with is most of the property is only ankle deep, but where they dredged a hole to steal material to build North Ocean Drive, it's like 20 feet deep. And we had seen young children playing there, and we put the fence up because that's going to attract the nuisance. But let's get back to my floating container home. My floating container home was shackled with five-inch stud link chain through the dock. Somebody came out there, unshackled the chain, pushed it free, and stole all my furniture. Furniture on the top deck and the furniture from the inside with the idea that this thing would drift out towards the intercoastal waterway. Now, this is the second time they did this. The first time they did it drifted all the way to North Palm Beach and landed up in a park over there. So what's going on where I live, Riviera Beach is encouraging people to vandalize my property, set stuff adrift, and I can't have a fence, I can't have electric for cameras, and they just don't care. Is this going to be this way forever? No, because we have some legal options, which you'll learn about in the next month or two. But in the interim, it's a dangerous situation because they are encouraging vandalism of my floating home, and it's coming from the top levels of Riviera Beach. How come everybody in the state of Florida can have a fence but me? Why? Because that's what Botel wants. She runs that city like a tyrant. How come everybody can have electrical service to have cameras, not Fane Loesman? So I just want the people in the county that used intercoastal waterway that there's going to be an accident one day where somebody's going to come crashing into my container home and say, "Why didn't we do something about it ahead of time?" I'm telling the people of the county that this is what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Nikki Brown, followed by Sheila Calderon.
Hello, thank you for welcoming. I'm Nikki Brown. I'd like to, I've got three quick comments that I'd like to make. I've got three minutes. First of all, I would like to thank the Commission for the wonderful work you guys have been doing on cleaning the Palm Tran buses. And I think we need to keep that up for a little longer, but I think it's working and it's very helpful with a lot of passengers like that. And secondly, I would like to give a heads up to all of you for the wonderful holiday services you guys have done because now the ridership is sky-high. I mean, the sky-high. I mean, you guys should be proud of yourselves. We had about 30 people on the number four bus, and this was on Memorial Day. And I've never seen that to us. And also, I want to thank you for all the wonderful work you're doing. You guys have been doing it in the pandemic. Ms. Bates Baker, thank you very much for your support and prayers. And I'd like to thank you all for your wonderful work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
We have Sheila Calderon, followed by Suzanne Bidaskum.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheila Calderon. I am from Green Acres and a very proud member of the Sierra Club and the rest of the environmental community. And I'm pleased to be here today. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here, although I did send you a letter, which a lot of what you're going to hear today was in my letter, so if you read it, you're going to hear it again, for the votes that were on the agricultural reserve and my concerns about them, so I would like to address that now. I am very disappointed that you did not vote against some of the proposals in the agricultural reserve. And I just want to add to that, that we are very blessed to have the agricultural reserve here. And as long as we continue to develop on it, we're going to continue to lose it. Agriculture is a good part of our economy, number one. We feed a good part of the northeastern seaboard during the winter, sea area, okay? It's important that we continue to have it and not continue to destroy it. So I'm going from there, okay? And my words are, the time for us is to stand up and say, "We won't take this anymore." Going back to 1999, when the citizens of Palm Beach County voted on $150 million bond to preserve the agricultural reserve for farmland. Slowly but surely, the developers have managed to build there where once was flourishing farmland, a good part of our Florida's economy, as I mentioned. Now we have the Kushner companies. They've applied for permits to the Commissioners for Palm Beach County to build a colossal distribution center. This is called Starkey Industrial Park, right on West Atlantic Avenue between the Turnpike and Lyons Road. I tell you, I've been there recently. The traffic now is unbelievable. I can't even imagine what it's going to be if you go ahead and approve this. It would be a disaster for anyone living there or around the area. The area is now farmland and part of the agricultural reserve. It is there to protect the environment and the Everglades, and it would be a great intrusion to this mission if we allow this. Some of the reasons? The current roads are barely adequate for the current volume of traffic, and I can attest to that. I stood there for at least three lights trying to get through. Imagine hundreds of trucks backed up to the Turnpike and Atlantic Avenue trying to get to such a center. It obviously requires substantial roadwork over an extended period of time, further mucking up the traffic, and of course, it's going to be at our expense.
Ma'am, we do appreciate your comments. Your time has expired, but we do have a question, so I will recognize Commissioner Sacks for comments as well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Commissioner Maria Sacks.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
I want to thank you for those comments. Thank you for coming here today and sharing your feelings and opinion about the Ag Reserve. It's my district, and I will try, along with my colleagues, to do the best for the people who live in the Ag Reserve and who enjoy it. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time today.
We have Suzanne Bidaskum, followed by Greg Turner.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Bidaskum. I'm a resident of Palm Beach County and work as a mental health practitioner. I'd like to address you today on the Access for All mesh Wi-Fi system that is in the process of being rolled out here in Palm Beach County because I do not believe you have all the facts. Wireless technology has bought us many innovations: iPhone, tablets, smart meters, smartphones, wearable tech, and now the Internet of Things, so that we could be hooked up 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The question is, at what cost? How are all the citizens in Palm Beach County being affected? There are 134 reviews and thousands of primary scientific papers that show that the wireless industry has no scientific support whatsoever from independent researchers. Thousands of published studies show biological harm and grave health effects from electromagnetic fields. And it has been clearly established what this mechanism of harm is, and it is a function of the impact of electromagnetics on our cells, not solely about the heating effects from the radiation, which is all the present FCC guidelines are based upon. The wireless industry is falsely peddling a belief that the forces electromagnetic fields place on electrically charged groups in human cells are too weak to produce biological effects. That is false. The fact is electromagnetic fields disrupt every cell in our body and have, and the studies are showing grave biological effects. I want you to consider all the research and clinical studies to the contrary of what you've been told. The biological harm has been known and documented from the second generation of wireless tech to where we are now at the fifth generation. And there are multiple biological effects as a result, and I'm going to name just five of them. Various neurological, neuropsychiatric effects, including changes in brain structure and function, which causes psychological responses and changes in behavior. Cardiac effects, influencing the electrical control of the art, including changes in ECGs, producing arrhythmias, and these changes can be life-threatening. Cellular damage and cancer, which likely involves these DNA changes. Fortunately, there are ways to expand technology while maintaining safety standards. I urge you to be leaders and to do the right thing for our community here in Palm Beach County by protecting us. But first, you must be educated with the facts so that you know that hardwiring this technology is the only solution. Education cannot just be from the wireless industry and the lobbyists that support them. Tomorrow, I will be providing names and resources of top independent industry experts who can assist you in going forward. I will email you an hour-long presentation by Dr. Martin Paul, the leading expert and researcher who has shown the dangers of wireless tech for 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and we look forward to receiving the information. And just a reminder to members of the public to not make any gestures of support or disagreement with those that are speaking to the Board of the County Commissioners.
We have Greg Turner, followed by Cindy Faco DeGorato.
Good afternoon, Greg Turner. I just have some ideas to improve tourism in Palm Beach County. It would take longer than three minutes, so I made up some brochures, and if you could go through them at your leisure, I'd appreciate it. There's some good websites to check out for what other cities do, so thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Where are their documents? Okay, we have them. Thank you very much, Mr. Turner.
We have Cindy Faco DeGorato, followed by Linda Smith.
I guess I don't get sprayed. It's nice to see your faces. I never knew what you looked like. I forgot what everybody looked like wearing those masks for so long. And as has been proven by Fachi, you didn't need them to begin with. It's all a lie. Today, I want to also concur with what was just spoken about and doing hardwiring for the 5G for what's going on in our community. It is going to disrupt especially those who had the virus shot. You will find yourself being magnetically drawn to all kinds of situations. But my real topic today that I'm very bothered with in my spirit is that I'm noticing that we're celebrating a sexual preference, calling it pride. When did homosexuality, transgenderism, pedophilia become a signia for Palm Beach County? I was just distraught to see on Sunday, I was driving in my community, that in front of Boynton Beach, in front of the children's museum, a homosexual symbol, and that our tax dollars paid for this. This is evil. This is like putting M&amp;S costumes and putting it in the art, calling it art, and putting it into the children's playground. When does the government and the people in the government take my money to pay for these things that I don't believe in and many people do not stand for? Why is this even happening? Why are we celebrating a sexual preference? It's not the government's business. It's none of our business who you choose to have sex with. That's between you and God, and you will answer to Him. I don't need to know that. Nobody needs to know that. What you do is between you and God and the privacy of your home. But to promote this and to shove this down our children's faces, now little children are going to be walking by downtown, "Mommy, what does that mean?" It's not the government's business. Why are you saying and celebrating pride of being a homosexual, a lesbian, a transgender? I'm a human being. I should be celebrated. They're a human being. They should be celebrated as human beings, not on sexual preferences. This is an abomination. It's disgusting. It's a disgrace. And parents, if you don't know this, I'm telling you, please, you need to step up and stand up and speak against it, so shoving this in your children's faces and causing confusion. I heard of a little girl that went home to her mommy, and she was told in her school by her teacher, right here in Palm Beach County, that she should like little girls in a sexual way. Why should children even be bothered with this? They're children. Let them play. Let them be innocent. My God, do you want to take everything from everybody? You can't do this. You can't do that. You can't do this. You've got to wear a mask, you've got to cover your face, which is the image of God. Shame on us. What are you doing? What are you creating? Do you not want your children to have any type of normality? Do you not give their parents the rights? You don't have any right to take the parents' rights away, telling children they have to wear masks, showing up and shoving this garbage down their throat in this critical race theory? Are you kidding me? It's Marxism. They're teaching this in the schools. You are above the school board. Why is this being taught in the schools? Some children went home, a little boy, a little boy says, "Mommy, mommy, I lied to my teacher." She said, "How did you lie?" She goes, "Well, I told him I had to go to the bathroom so that I could breathe." And they're teaching him to hate each other. This has got to stop, and it starts here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Before, Linda, you're next, and then we're going to have Shirley Denton-Jackson. I'll just weigh in on what Cindy mentioned because I live a couple blocks away from City Hall, and, you know, I think that the city commissioners in the city of Boynton Beach made the right decision in terms of painting the streets. And I drove by there. I had my daughter there, and I had no issues with that, so I completely disagree with you. And this is, what you're saying is just not right at all. And I think that, you know, we're taking leadership in the county in terms of recognizing Pride Month, and, you know, we did the pictures with Palm Tran, and so, you know, we're doing the right thing in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Ms. Smith, you recognized.
Amen, Commissioner Bernard. Thank you.
Yes, in fact, the entire Board was present for that picture, along with our senior administration, and I think we were all very proud to participate in that event today. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mayor.
I know why I sat in this seat. I don't like hateful speech. And I also don't like incorrect facts as to who's over the school board. So just as a statement to those who wish to speak, let's keep it peace. Let's think about peace and love. We are community together, and this is what we should all be about. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Certainly, we try to embrace a spirit of inclusion and equality in Palm Beach County, and something we're all very proud of. Ms. Smith, you recognize for three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Linda Smith. I live in Jupiter, Florida. I have been fully vaccinated. I still wear my mask to help people who cannot be vaccinated to feel more comfortable doing the responsible thing. I want to congratulate Palm Beach County for achieving the Seoul Smart Gold status, meaning that you have made it easier for businesses and residents to install solar panels. I've had locally manufactured solar panels on my home for over four years now. I also want to congratulate you on receiving the $800,000 grant from the State Department of Economic Development opportunity to conduct a climate change vulnerability assessment. But I just want to question, what are you doing to actually mitigate the climate change? How much is being spent on electrifying our transportation infrastructure? I don't see a lot of solar panels actually on county buildings, new or retrofit, so please put your money where your mouth is. I'm going to agree with some Sheila. We need to protect the agricultural reserve. Seems like every week or two I hear about more development in the Ag Reserve, providing more traffic, more hardscape, less stormwater retention, more hazardous storm runoff. Also, what is happening with that illegal ski lake in the Ag Reserve? Are they still paying the $17,000 a day in fines, whatever fines they're being collected? It must not be causing enough pain, as they spent $7.8 million for 30 acres. This property will eventually come to staff and to you for a variance. I hope the staff and you say no when the property comes back. And question, where do you stand on our reduced plastic ordinance? Tonight, Boca is going to hopefully join 26 other local municipalities, and I'm just wondering where Palm Beach County is. We need to protect native trees. We need to increase native trees. We need to spend the zoning fines collected to purchase and plant native trees. And I encourage everyone to watch The Story of a Forest on YouTube that has just been made available free of charge. This is a local movie about a local forest, and it was not that far back in time. It was about 20 years ago, and I don't believe a lot of the people sitting on the Board here were sitting in these seats at the time. But I encourage you not to repeat history. Please watch The Forest on YouTube. I'm running out of time, so I'm going to ask you to take a moment and just think about what I might be saying to you in regards to fertilizer runoff and trying to slow that. We need to try to keep our waterways clean, protect it from blue-green algae.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you for your.
We do have seven seconds left. So I did want to say as an aside, and I'll get to you in just one second, Commissioner Weiss, I'm not going to comment on some of the items you brought up just because they're either in litigation or it's inappropriate to comment here because of some zoning issues. But I did have an opportunity to go down to Broward County with Assistant County Administrator Todd Bonlaren, and I wanted to share with the Board, I had an opportunity to tour and look at the technology of electric buses for use on a county level, and I was just blown away by how the technology has improved, how efficient they are in terms of battery capacity, and I do look forward to the day that we can push that initiative forward. I do think it's something that we are already tackling. This is just an anecdotal story for a much larger picture of green energy, but I was taken aback by the leaps and bounds that the private market has made in terms of moving a lot of people on one conveyance using electric power. So Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for being here. I guess two things. One is to let you know that county staff is working on an ordinance or resolution regarding single-use Styrofoam and plastics at our facilities. And number two is I believe the county is participating with FPL in their smart solar program, where you buy into, if you will, buy into their solar program. So we are, we're trying to do the best we can to move things forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
We have Shirley Joy Denton-Jackson, followed by Brandy Ann.
Hi. My name is Shirley Joy Denton-Jackson. I was a research project manager for the school district and the Department of Safe Schools before I had to retire early because I became what they call electromagnetically sensitive. So we understand that you're trying to empower people by giving them access to an information tool, the Internet. And with funding in hand now, it's a perfect opportunity for Palm Beach County to get it right. You started out superbly with the fiber optics that have absolutely zero radiation effect, zero on people. Today, I'm just, I want to encourage you to examine the evidence more closely, as I did as a research project manager. You have the sole responsibility to protect the citizens on this issue. First, a single fact might be hard to hear. Fact is, your digital Access for All newsletter, your IT department and your staff are relaying information to the public that is both incorrect and terribly misleading. I want to leave you with just two pictures. One has to do with, what happens is they promote instead the impression that being certified or being in compliance with FCC regulations means that it's safe for humans, but that's not what it actually means. What it means is that the device that they're talking about will not trigger a particular measure of heat in human tissue. Here's how they determined it back in 1975 in a rat study that is still what the FCC depends upon for human exposure levels. Here's a quote from something written. Here's how the, here's how the study went. The thresholds, the thresholds for adverse effects were set at the level at which heating caused, quote, "A disruption of observable behaviors in animals. Typically, the effect observed has been a decreased rate of responding or decreased reaction time." That is it. That's the study that currently informs our FCC human exposure regulations. So basically, they trained rats. They made them food to touch a lever to get food. They took the food away so that they'd be really hungry. They put a thermometer into their rectum. They looked at, so they could monitor temperature. And then they kept on raising the radiation power until the food-deprived rats collapsed.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired, and I would encourage you to submit any information you have to the members of the Board.
I'll send you the backup information with the group.
Thank you, ma'am.
That is suing the FCC based on this issue.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two last cards, which will be Brandy Ann, followed by...
Again, just a reminder that it's important that you not disrupt the proceedings or else you'll be asked to leave. Thank you.
We have Brandy Ann, followed by Drew Martin.
What's really mind-blowing is that we are paying you guys six-figure salaries. And Virginia Baker, who is the highest-paid employee in Palm Beach County, that is making $335,000 a year, and that is 464% higher than the average and 551% higher than the median salary in Palm Beach County. What's even more disturbing is that you guys are the same people who could care less what we have to say, and it's obvious that you don't give a shit, or else you wouldn't be building a future...
You're not going to be able to use that type of language in front of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, well, it's obvious because you wouldn't...
If you do again, please pause your time. If you do that again, you will be removed from this chamber and you'll be trespassed from this building. Do you understand?
For speaking?
For using that language. I think we're pretty clear on your ability to speak.
You wouldn't be building a digital prison for your children. How about that? You wouldn't be doing that with the free Wi-Fi mesh project. Why don't you just be honest? It's not free. The kids are the product. They're looking for their data, and you all know this. I just, you guys act like you don't know anything. It's ridiculous. But this digital divide is coming from the UN. It's not free. Their kids are the product, and they're only being used as commodities who are being sold to the highest bidder. In this case, it just so happens that the data... so happens that the data that your kids produce is so valuable that these global corporations and hedge funds and tech companies, they didn't mind spending a few billion dollars to build infrastructure. So soon, the whole world would be living in a Black Mirror TV show, except this is real life. And when exactly were you guys going to explain all these things to people, like digital classroom wallets and digital learning and all this surveillance? My assumption is that you weren't, because you knew that people would never agree to education being destroyed, and pretty much eventually, they will eliminate teachers, I'm sure you're aware of this, and have VR headsets for gamified learning. And if you think I'm full of crap, then you can look it up, because it's already out there. So, I don't think anybody would agree for being tracked and surveilled and then logged into. Everything is on a ledger for blockchain that determines what our life may look like. So what would my opportunities look like, say, if I had two divorced parents and, you know, I had a divorced family, I was, let's say, I got in trouble in my past, I didn't have a great start in life. Well, that's going to go on my blockchain ledger. So like, I don't know why you guys think this is a great idea. Like, these tech companies and you guys working together, that's fascism. And the fact that you guys are going to allow these policies to go through is just kind of sickening. Like, I try to be decent when I come here, but I'm just so over it. Because you people, like, you don't care about people. You just care about the money. Like, I don't understand that. Like, do you really believe that big tech has our best interest in mind? And with what Suzanne said about the technology and like the levels and everything, I mean, she's right. You can look it up. But if you really cared about that, you would do something. And if you did care about the environment, you would have banned single-use plastics a long time ago, and you would have banned glycer, and you would have banned all these things that are harmful for us. But you don't. So, that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. You have 14 seconds left.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify that we're banned from the Florida Legislature. We are preempted from regulating a few of the things that she suggested. So feel free to address your member of the Florida Senate or the Florida House of Representatives, and let them know how you feel about those preemptions. That's why we can't do anything on a lot of this. Thank you.
Thank you for the facts, Commissioner McKinley. Mr. Martin, you're recognized for three minutes, sir.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the boxet group of the Sierra Club. And I want to thank, first of all, Linda Smith and Sheila Calderon for coming. We are concerned about the ag reserve and the fact that we think the development is being done in a way that is undermining the purpose of the ag reserve, which was first and foremost to be an agricultural area. We think that it's still viable. And in fact, one of the biggest investors in agriculture land right now is Bill Gates. So I think, you know, he realizes that farmland is a good investment. I disagree with a lot of the people out there who are saying that they don't, you know, they can't sell their land or they're forced to farm. But the reality is, they can sell their land, but they want to get development rights increased so they can sell it for more. But that doesn't mean they can't sell their land. It just means they can't get a maximum price. But the reality is that we may find at some point that agriculture land is more valuable than land for development, that we've made the assumption now, right now, the market is driving us to take away agriculture and put in housing. But that may not last. And so I think it, you know, we have to look at the long-term benefit to the county of maintaining agriculture land and not be driven by short-term economics, which is going to encourage that land to be removed. We also disagree with the assumption that 40 or 50 acres is not a viable piece of property to do agriculture. And if you go down to Miami Dade, you will find that many people are doing viable agriculture on 40, 50 acres. If it's done properly, it can be done. And a lot of that land in Miami Dade is actually going to be affected by sea level rise, which means that the agricultural land up here has actually become more valuable, not less. So we hope you'll take that into consideration when you make those decisions. And we do encourage you, and we're happy to hear that you're looking forward, we're looking forward to a ban on whatever you can do that's not preempted, on single-use plastics, and also encouraging that you do education. One of the biggest problems are plastic, single-use plastic bags, which I know at this time, you are preempted from doing something about. However, education, you could do education and promote that. I don't drive anywhere that I don't see a single-use plastic bag blowing around in the wind. And I'm always tempted to slam on my brakes and jump out of my car and run out and get it. But I know it'd probably cause a multi-car accident if I did that, so I don't. But the reality is, a lot of people purchase things in a store. They come out of the store, and the first thing they do is they throw that bag down, because they didn't really need a bag. And so that's just an education thing that you, as the county, could promote. And that is to educate stores. If somebody doesn't really need a plastic bag, and they're not going to use it, and they're going to throw it on the ground, maybe that's a time to educate them, the store, not to hand them a plastic bag. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We have a question or a comment by Commissioner McKinley.
Okay.
Mr. Martin, thank you for being here today.
My pleasure.
You know, I've been out on Lake Okeechobee a couple of times in the past few weeks. And I don't see plastic bags in the water. I don't see plastic straws. I don't even see water bottles in the water.
Good.
But what I do see are the Mylar balloons.
Oh, absolutely. That's certainly something that needs to be dealt with.
When you make your comments and you're doing your community education on those single-use plastics, maybe you want to incorporate some talking points on the balloons?
Absolutely.
That would be great. That was the one thing I saw again and again on the lake.
And that might be something that you're not preempted. That might be a possible...
I think we have a policy about those types of balloons in some of our park facilities. But just, just something for Sierra Club to consider.
Okay. Well, thank you. We always appreciate your input. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any last comments by members of the board? Well, thank you again for your participation. I'm speaking to the public here. We do care deeply about the comments and positions that you have, and we do take them very seriously. And we appreciate your advocacy on whatever particular issue you're here for. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I just want to thank you, Mayor, for curtailing any hateful speech that contains language that we would not want our children to hear. I appreciate that very much. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We have to certainly tolerate differing views, but certainly hate speech and comments directed to particular commissioners or using words that are inappropriate for public discourse will not be tolerated. And we appreciate the service of the Sheriff's Office here to help us enforce the rules of conduct and demeanor in this very important chamber. With that, the Board of County Commissioners is adjourned. Thank you.